Okay. Following to where the special war media of the couple of school for Friday, March tenth, twenty twenty three. For the purposes of interviewing a candidate for District Three on the school board. And today we have Director Bojack, our student representative Dennis Lynn, myself, Dave Larson, and Demores, our superintendent, and online is President Carly Hoover. Welcome to nobody who's here. Or, oh, we have to be online. Welcome to the post, our trainees online for this interview situation. We're going to have one adjustment to the agenda that's published, and that is to add after three A, the interview, an executive session, which is standard for whenever we do an interview, we get an opportunity for the board to discuss the interview and then come out of the executive session and vote in on accepting the new members. So take a motion to approve the agenda with that modification.
So second.
And we would second that we approved the agenda with the modification. All pairs say aye. It's unanimous. Okay, so welcome to Brenda Berger, who's our applicant for District Three. Really appreciate it. We've been looking for a long time. And we decided to step forward and do this. The process, we're gonna, we have a bunch of questions here that we're just gonna kind of round robin through and ask you, and then at the end, we'll go into executive session, discuss, and then come out of executive session and then vote. As we have to a roll call vote to accept or not. And so Director Hoover, do you wanna, you have all the questions you wanna be in on the questioning?
Yeah, sure. I'd love to. Hopefully, I can get my video on as well.
Okay, so you wanna start with question one? I'll just kind of round robin and go Director Hoover and then Director Bojack, and then our student representative, myself, Victor Morris, and then cycle back around. So you wanna go ahead with the first question?
Sure, absolutely. And I just want to name two Ms. Berger's apologies for not being there in person. I really wanted to be, but I'm home with a newborn, as you may have heard. So I'm really excited that you're here. I'm excited to get to know you a little bit more through these questions. So take some time, please tell us something about yourself and your involvement with the Takula schools and the school district community as a whole.
Hey, well, congratulations on your newborn. I'm happy that you get to be home with them. So in case you all know my name, it's Brenda Berger. I live in the Takula School District. I've been a resident here in Takula for about ten years now. I do not have any active children in the district right now, but my partner and I have two children that are ten and fourteen, and we look to have them enrolled in the district next year. And so as far as just active of, you know, who's, who's in the district right now for me and my personal life. But I am an active community member. I live in Foster Estates, just down the road here on right off under thirty seventh. And so active in my community and my background, I have my degree in elementary education and early childhood education. Many moons ago, when I graduated, and I did teach for about five years, I'm in first and third grade when I first graduated from college. Prior to starting a different journey on my career path, but was had a passion my entire life for being with kids and investing in youth. And I loved my kind of teaching. At that time, I was got married to a man that was a military, and so that kind of changed our path of being having a stable in the community and not being able to teach. So at that time, I pivoted and had a few different careers or career paths, but have been at Boeing, at Boeing Company here, also in the Takula area. And for about the last twenty years now, I think I'm just about, I'm at twenty of the anniversary coming up in May. So I've been an active member of the Boeing family. I'm in our community, serving there on our diversity board, and I've had several different roles with the company that don't have a lot of direct relevance to the school district, but do so in just the community, it means a much larger volunteering, the diversity part of the community, and just our workforce being here in Takula. How to elaborate more if you would like me to? If there's anything that you'd like me to go deeper into, I'd have to dig deep.
We got a bunch of questions.
Let's keep going.
In your application, you shared why you want to be director. Would you please share with us what strengths you see yourself bringing to the board?
And so I may have a bit of a Pollyanna of an idea here, but for me, the idea of a group of diverse perspectives on board to make sure that we're looking at all perspectives and all needs across the district, both from the student population, the staff, superintendent, and all of those elements. And so I would love to bring a diverse perspective to the board and I do, my, my spouse and children may not know this based on my own appearance, but they're black, and so we are a mixed race family. And so I bring that perspective of just that element of diversity of my own personal experience, as well as a passion for making sure that we're looking at the equity that's required across the entire as the student base that's here. So knowing that there's eighty percent minority student base in Takula, I think that that is a really important perspective to bring to the school board.
Thank you. And please share with us your perception of what the role of a school board director is.
Well, that's a great question. I'm here to learn as much as I am to influence, I think. And so I think really it's in layman's terms, the idea of providing framework and bumpers for the school district, if you will, making sure that we're kind of the guiding posts as far as how the school district is run, accountability to make sure that the the school district in itself does what it says it's going to do, and then provide any oversight as needed would be my, my best guess until I learn more.
Okay, school board directors make many decisions. What should be the prime considerations for a director when making a decision?
I thought about this a little bit before I came. So I think that there's, you know, fact-based decision making is important. And you contrast that against fact versus rumor. But I also think that the social emotional impacts of the decisions are also equally important, that we don't want to dismiss those and think about it in terms of only facts and data without understanding the emotional impact and the social impacts on those decisions as well. So a bit of a balance between the two.
Please share your thoughts about the involvement of school directors in the day-to-day operation decisions of the Takula School District.
And I don't know that I know I'm not yet taking into that really well, but I would think that being aware of what's happening in the schools, volunteering in the schools, observing and seeing those, those types of things would be an important part of what we do. And then responding where there's a request for someone to integrate, to interact with the school district, being available to show up when we need.
Great, thank you. What do you believe are the key elements of a cohesive and effective board of directors?
Cohesive and effective. So cohesion definitely is active listening to each other, listening with technique, understanding, so that we are of kind of one consensus, making sure that we understand what each other is saying and come together with a united answer, accepting where we may have differences of opinions, but still coming together in a cohesive way. So you said cohesive and effective, right? And so then the effectiveness would be making sure that what we're doing is value-added, and that sometimes there are things that you think might be value-added, but that you've been having that with this test to make sure that what you're doing is actually adding the value that you want would be the effectiveness, getting feedback from those that we serve, to make sure that we're meeting their needs as well would be a very important part of ineffectiveness.
Thank you. We're back to. Please describe your current thinking about social justice and racial equity in the education system in June.
I think that it's a constant learning journey that as a society, as a community, that we are constantly learning more and more by listening, applying empathy, really putting ourselves in each other's shoes and understanding those different perspectives is really important. And knowing that there's not one right answer, that there can be multiple perspectives, and that that doesn't mean that one is right and one is wrong when we're looking at that. And then really, one of the words that you use that's important to me is they oftentimes we diffuse equity and equality, but that the equity of making sure that applying the needs where the needs are needed to ensure that all students have an equal opportunity to be their best person, maybe their best selves is very important, but providing everyone the same thing isn't always the right answer.
So Takula School District is committed to advancing racial and educational equity and must continuously increase growth of growth for us. What experience do you have working to advance racial equity for yourself and within an organization or an education center?
Oh, so I'm gonna give you two quick examples that are the most pertinent. So one is my partner and I are actively working to stand up a nonprofit to serve the youth at risk in our community. And so that's one area where we're taking that passion and those principles that we have and applying it to the where the needs are in our youth and understanding needing them where they are. All sorts of different diverse backgrounds and things like that. And so a part of that for us is volunteering in different schools and different community groups to understand where those needs are and understand where that is. So that's definitely one. That's a journey for me, and we're just kind of on the leading edge of getting started there. The one where I have a bit more experience is in at Boeing in my, my role, I serve on the diversity community at work. And so that is a key element for us in the workplace, a similar approach, but just ensuring that all perspectives, all backgrounds, we have a lot of English as a second language, a lot of diversity from different countries, global footprint, global community, making sure that we're being considerate and and inclusive of all of those different communities that make up our workforce.
What do you see as the board's role in leading for racial equity?
I think the first thing is being by example. That asking anyone to do something that we're not willing to do ourselves is is a bit challenging. So we want to be by example, and first and foremost. And then I think anytime we have an opportunity to influence diverse selection or diverse activities or things like that in the community of making sure that we're incorporating all of those different elements and any decisions that we make will be very important.
Please share your thoughts about the relationship between the superintendent and the school.
Yeah, so I will answer this a bit based on my own personal experience as a teacher, where I know the superintendent felt like they were a few degrees separated from me as an, as a, you know, early teacher in my career. But I think really looking at the bigger picture, I like that the Takula School District is a bit on the smaller side, so I'm hoping that there's a bit more of an intimate relationship there between the staff and superintendent, which I would think I taught in the Kent School District, it was a much larger district. So I think the school board's relationship with the superintendent would be one of both partnership and accountability, making sure that we're partnering together towards shaping the school district in the ways that honor the the charter that we have at the school district, and then also making sure that there's united front and much of pocket there that is one voice.
Thank you. Finally got my camera on. Hello. What do you consider to be the priority areas of accountability for the superintendent?
I think that how we spend the budget and the dollars that we have in the school district would definitely be one area of focus. I think listening to the staff of the district and understanding where they're having challenges and needs and being responsive to that is another key element. And then I think promoting a safe, secure, inviting learning space for all students would be the, the other key piece of that as a superintendent.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. We're on number twelve. It is important for a director to know what the parents and other community members are thinking about schools. What ideas do you have on how to improve outreach to all parents and increase community involvement in our schools?
Good for them. I think one of the best ways to engage any kind of a group is to know where they are. And so sometimes just inviting someone to come to us can be intimidating or inconvenient. And so the idea of how do we go into the communities where those parents are, whether it be no, the Y M C A, or there's different places where parents may already gather at sporting events that they may be, and things like that, where there's kind of a natural congregation is definitely one way that we can do that. And I think being proactive in being the first one to smile and say hello is really important, too. But again, kind of that leaning in versus wanting someone to come to us is very important.
Have you had an opportunity to review the district's budget? If so, what is your opinion about how much has been currently spent?
I have not had an opportunity to review, and I did look to see if I could find that, and I wasn't able to find it quickly at my fingertips. So I follow up with other data points, but I didn't see that. So I don't have a good answer for you.
If you had the ability to introduce one practice, procedure, process into the Takula School District at this time, what would it be?
Give me the hard question. I'm the best practice. That's something we could come down to. Yeah, I just, I have like fifteen pop right in my head, which would be the thing that I was choosing as the most impactful.
We can change that to thirty.
I think that the most important for me, the most important thing is investing time into our people. And so I think any act, and that's where I was trying to figure out, which is, which activity is the largest investment of time. But I think that that's when, when people see that you engage and you show up and you're willing to give your personal time to listen, to impact them in a way, respond back to their needs, that that's the best use. And that would be the, the thing that I would want to make sure that we were focusing on is just really showing that we're not some group of people that sit behind a dark curtain that no one knows or understands what our purpose is. And so helping them, helping to educate them, what the purpose of the board is, and getting their input and feedback by really investing time in that and building those relationships would be the most important, I think.
If you are in today's school or community, and a parent makes statements critical of a teacher, how would you respond?
I think that it's important to acknowledge that that parent's perspective is valid and encourage them or ask them, you know, kind of being be inquisitive of have you done a negative comment? And have you done anything in response to that? Have you gone unspoken with the teacher? Have you you know, taken any action to see if we can make a positive input on that? And kind of asking them what actions they've taken. And then if they have, encourage them to do so. That, you know, having nice conversations are important. And obviously, it would be a bit dependent on what the type of comment was, that, you know, if someone had a raging anger, I would want to go speak with someone, but but if they had some feedback that I, you know, could be a positive. And so at the very least, it's acknowledging and what they feel and then giving them maybe a next step, so that they know what that is. So going to talk to the teacher will be one next step, depending on what the feedback is, there could be other options as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So being a director is a large-time commitment. How much time each week are you willing to spend? And then realistically, how much would you expect to spend on school board activities?
And part of why, when I received the postcard of the mail letting me know about this as an opening, and I applied for the interning, and if I didn't, there was just this innate thing in me that was like, yes. That it, for me, it feels like kind of a melding of three really important passions that I have of investment in youth, investing in my community, and then contributing to kind of the my own idea of, you know, other opportunities for me to get personally involved in the community and options, things like that. And so I I say this and then I laugh at myself when I say it, but like, I'm willing to do what it takes. That I think is important, and I don't come into this lightly. I know that it is a commitment. And so I think that no, I I don't work four-hour work week. I work however many hours it takes for me to do the right thing at my job at Boeing, and I was, I was saying, thinking here that I wouldn't put a limitation on how many hours that I would do, whatever it takes is what I wanted to get.
How should a level official such as school board directors ensure that their entire constituency has a voice and not just those who are vocal and want to speak for the majority?
I think as a group, talking about maybe who's gonna take a turn or a bit of a rotating activity, if there's specific engagement that we're yet doing, making sure that everyone has an opportunity to, to be on the front, if you will, that that's certainly one approach. And then I think kind of complimentary to one of my comments earlier is really making sure we're allowing time to listen to each other. But, you know, not everybody can be the type A dominant personality in the room and be successful. And so being self-aware and recognizing yeah, having heard from you today, you know, what are your thoughts on it? And allowing space and time for everyone to have that, that all to contribute is really important as well.
Is it possible for me to kind of ask a, an additional kind of follow-up question to this one? Is that allowed? Okay, it's also kind of in part related to racial equity component. And you mentioned very beautifully the idea of run diversity and ensuring that our board has multiple perspectives at the table. And that's incredibly important to me, I know for sure. And I know other members that are sitting in front of you, and also kind of looking around the room with the exception of Dr. Herndon, who's not on the school board, and Dennis, our student representative, we are a very white board. So I would, I'd be curious to know, I'm kind of reflecting on your answer from your last question, and then thinking about kind of the work around the racial equity work that we continue to want to champion as a district. How do you really see kind of your place on a board that's already so white, but really helping us to continue to really further the work in a way that we, we desperately need to, to do?
Yeah, I made that same observation as you did, as kind of looking at, at the face value of the diversity in the room. I, I know my personal family, that when, when we walk into, to a room that my my partner is black and our two children are black and have Native American. And so part of that for me is that extension of if I'm going to an event, I know I'm bringing them with me in a lot of public activities and events. And so that's a bit of an extension of who I am as a person and what I bring. But I also think that it's important that we're continuously recruiting, looking for opportunities to engage the diverse community and see how they might contribute, that they may not be aware of, of opportunities and how we can engage with them and make sure that we have that very welcome place for them to come in and join us and partner with us as an extension of the board as well.
Thank you.
Some situation, discussion regarding the item to come to board that could potentially be a conflict of interest. How would you handle it?
A conflict of interest with me personally, I would make sure that was well-known, and I believe that the standard protocol would be to excuse myself from that situation.
Okay, last question. And then I guess we'll have, if you want to ask us some questions, you can do that. But is there anything else you'd like to share with us about you as a school director candidate that we may have failed to ask about?
No, I won't tell you. And only that I can, will just restate that I am very excited about the opportunity. Like, I really do have this, this passion. I didn't even ask my spouse before I applied, which is very unlike us of me that thankfully he was very supportive, not where I told him I did. But I, I just am very excited about the opportunity. And, and I think that that excitement and that passion translates into action as we go forward. So can I just make that clear?
Can I ask a follow-up? Multicultural experience outside of your family and multicultural experience, but in parts of the world, have you lived anywhere else? Have you, do you speak any of the languages?
Sure, yeah. So I grew up in a Seattle Public School District back in the early seventies. So bussing was a very popular activity. And so I grew up with a very diverse group of friends and ethnicity at my own personal walk. I lived in West Seattle, but we were invested in Hill. And so to this day, child, the grade school friends that I had that were near there that were Vietnamese, African-American, I still have that that I carried through with me. And so that's, that's part of my walk. I've never lived in another country, but I have traveled many countries. And one of the great things about me working for a global company with Boeing is I've had an opportunity to travel internationally to several different places. India, Vietnam. I've been to Ireland, London, where else have I been international? Brazil, and then I've done a few personal volunteer missions to Guatemala, orphanage there. I do speak Spanish. I learned French when I was at high school, so I can pick up a little bit if I need to, to have a little bit of a conversation. But I'm definitely not proficient in French anymore, but Spanish and French have similar patterns, so I can usually translate pretty well, but. You can, could I ask a follow-up?
Sure. So the school district as a whole is, you know, committed to certain students. And also I'm wondering to you, what do you think is the most important things that, that we need to continuously do to make sure that we are representing student voices?
Yeah, so I think asking the students what's important to them and then all of the others, right? So I think it's one thing to ask, but the other part is that we're actually taking action based on that is the most important part. If you take lots of surveys but don't do anything with that data, then it tends to, folks don't want to keep taking surveys, right? So really, no, what's the student body looking for? What are they interested in? How can, how can we help serve them, whether it was important to them?
So do you have any, yeah, that's the last question we had. Anything you wanted to ask us?
I just have one. And this might be, so I only have a set of data based on the research that I wish. But I was looking at the proficiency scores across the district in both math and reading and seeing that they're, you know, almost under fifty percent for the most part across the board. But yet the graduation rate was like eighty-six point six percent. And I was like, how can that be true? So help me, how can that be true? How are we graduating students that have that over four percent rate in the district?
Yes. I can, you know, maybe take a shot at that. That's a, yeah, that's a question I ask myself as well. And it's, it's, it's a bit of a complicated question and you'll get, different people give you different ideas on that particular subject. One of them kind of points at the tests. The tests, and this is kind of what our current superintendent, state superintendent of public instruction, Chris Schreickall will tell you, is that the tests are kind of set up for students who want to go to a four-year college track. And we know our graduation, you know, to graduate from high school, that doesn't mean you have to go to a four-year college.
Right.
You might, you know, go into the military, you might get a job, you might do some post-secondary. And so part of it is, is that aspect of it. Another, you know, we have, you know, in districts, I mean, we have the highest percentage of English learners in the area. So, and my observation of it is those students, and actually Dennis is, he came from Vietnam with knowing almost any, any English at all. And those students, you know, they'll, they, they take some time to learn. And then, and then what I find is that they take off and go. And so, and the tests, of course, are mostly in elementary, they're three through eight and one and ten. So, you know, what happens in high school is, is not necessarily fully reflected in, in the tests. So that's, I don't know, a couple of answers. I mean, it's, it's a fairly complicated issue. And, but this is not to say that we're satisfied with, I mean, we're working on methods, particularly because we know like forty percent of our, are these English learners students. And we're working on new, you know, instructional strategies to, to improve that and make it better. So, and I would tell you, I can, I don't know, I can, at some point, I can give you my, there's a whole presentation that I have about correlation between income levels and test scores and the, and K-county.
Yeah.
It's a direct, and so we also have the highest percentage of, you know, students that qualify for free reduced lunch in our district. And I use that not to say that our students are defective. I use that to say the system is defective in terms of how it pushes money to us.
Right.
You know, it largely pushes, you know, the same amount of money per student. And that, you know, to your point, I'm glad to hear you. I have many charts of equity versus equality. We pound on that a lot. And so, you know, constantly counting on the state to, you know, give us more resources because, you know, and we have a bunch of strategies that we're working on that could be scaled up, but we probably need some more money to them. So anyway, that's, that's a long answer that I can probably give you.
Well, I appreciate the complexity by it. And I'm just catching on the surface when I.
Yeah. No, that's absolutely, I asked myself exactly the same question. And so we were, it's a.
Do we have a statistic or know how many of the graduating class actually do go on to it?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, right you brought that up. So, yeah, that's another thing I like to look at is what happens to our students after they graduate. And there is a, a state agency that actually tracks that. Interestingly enough, it's called the R N E C Education Research Data Center. I was just in some sessions with them. And, you know, are, what happens to them in terms of enrolling in post-secondary, in terms of persisting in post-secondary and graduating? We're, we're pretty much, you know, an average with, with the rest of the state. So I'm always looking at a couple of things. I'm always looking at trends and comparisons in data. And so, yeah, I mean, our kids do, you know, they aren't, aren't way behind. Because that's one that I watch pretty closely because I want to know if, you know, if they're not succeeding. This is not to say that, I mean, in general, students that go to college about fifty percent, just in general dropout. And ours are not any greater than that. So anyway, yeah. Yeah. And if anybody else want to.
No, I think.
That's one I could talk about for a while.
Okay. And then I'll just kind of add this to any of the, the district directors. What is the most challenging part of the role for you?
Systemic change takes a long time and it's a difficult procedure. And I Pollyanna awesome. I would, I thought it would be, I knew it would be a difficult task, but I didn't recognize it would be. So, okay. And so that, that's a frustration for me.
Right.
Yeah. But it's also been rewarding in getting to know the staff and that's been extremely rewarding.
Yeah, I would say that it's been a loving relationship for me because I love the kids and I love what we're doing, what we're trying to do and all of that. But for me, I'm not a policy kind of person. I'm more of a hands-on. And so the challenge for me is to try to keep my hands off and stick with the policy part. So, yeah.
Yeah. There's five, there's camera.
You know, I take it that, I started that directly.
Yeah. That's a, I mean, I think a, a tough question. I'm fairly new myself. I'm about, what, fourteen months now in? And so, and similar to you, I didn't really know a whole lot about just kind of the ins and outs of the district coming in. So I think it's just been kind of learning a lot about really the role and the balance of the school board with the superintendent. And I feel really grateful for the relationships that we have and that I have with, with our superintendent. And I feel like we're strengthening that partnership and continuing to, you know, just figure out how we can be more aligned in our work. But I think that's been a big challenge. And, and I think, you know, kind of related to the, the follow-up question I asked before, I think it's a constant challenge of just really ensuring that we're, I as an individual and that, and pushing us collectively to, you know, just be aware of our lenses that we hold and our privileges that we hold and, you know, how even just sitting, I, I'm so grateful for the things that you were saying about just really going to folks. That's, I think, another challenge logistically for me. The time, I think, is hard because what I desire to do and what I can actually do, I think, are really two different things. And so, so figuring out like how to, how to step back, as Director Bullock Jack was saying a little bit, and really, you know, let Dr. Herndon and his team do so much of the, of the hands-on, the things that oftentimes make me so happy and passionate, but just watching them do those things instead and, and being a support to them. So there's a lot of things, because a lot of things are really difficult, but also so like rewarding. I feel like I've learned so much and grown so much as a human and as a, as a leader over the last fourteen months. So yeah, that's what I got.
Yeah, thank you all for those perspectives. That's helpful.
Okay, so I guess we'll go into an executive session. I, I'm thinking five, ten minutes. Ten minutes, if you.
So you're able to stay here, but just.
If you want.
Sure.
Then, then we can just, because we'll come out and quickly and then vote and then I know what the results are really fast.
Is Dennis allowed to stay in this executive session? Or is that not allowed ever?
I don't think student reps are allowed to stay.
Okay. Can we, can he share any thoughts?
Yeah.
No, it's gonna keep going. Can we start the executive session with Dennis saying a few words so that it won't, and then?
Are you sure in this, in this case?
Yeah, because he doesn't have a vote for that.
Well, that's fine.
But he just said this guy thinks about that. So that's why you have to, like, the executive session is around whatever it's action is.
Right.
So I don't think student reps, but you can, before you adjourn to executive session, you can, we're still in public and you can get his perspective for sure.
Okay. You want to give a perspective?
Yeah, then.
Okay.
I mean, I I really like, I was talking to seven. It's obviously, you know, this is new to her. So it's the answer, you know, there's not much detail, but I would love there to be a little more detail and, and the answers. I mean, and I'm always looking for whatever is the, this was the straightest, especially on the art board here. So it's good because she has a raised family and, and she does understand some aspects of what her kids have to face every single day. So I guess if we're not voting, but I, I do like her as of this moment right now. And she did that.
So now we'll adjourn to an executive session under R C W forty-two thirty-one dash ten, or point ten G, which allows us to go in an executive session to discuss appointment of a new board of director candidate.
Okay, now who was going to do?
You set the watch and make sure nobody's.
And I told my estimate of time would be ten minutes.
So who I can post probably.
You could. And then the other thing is, in, in the event that this, you both are affirmative, given you four, she's sworn in because she's fired for the Saturday. Meeting tomorrow, she would like to attend that.
Probably.
She turned out and. Not there to official boardroom until official was sworn in. But she could attend, of course, meeting anyway. So. I mean, it's obviously super short notice, but.
Yeah, sure. And you attend in fifteen hours.
Okay.
Where's the baby? Uh, oh. Now I'm alone. That's not supposed to be happen. So should I? Okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
Should I go get her?
Yeah. Yeah, why don't you wait until we get? Okay, so we're coming out of our executive session on the March tenth discussion meeting. And we decided that we're going to postpone the actual vote on it until our Tuesday meeting. And I'll have a little more discussion at our Saturday meeting, which is an open meeting. And, you know, you can come, it's, it's a, it's more of a, a training session, which we're training with our race and equity trainers essentially. It's from eight to ten, eight to ten thirty in the morning, which it also will be virtual. So you, of course. And, yeah, so that's it.
So would you like me to return on Tuesday for that meeting or?
Sure.
So would you communicate back to me?
You can do it either way. Yeah, either way. You're welcome to come to that. You'll see, we'll, we'll modify the agenda for Tuesday to include that. I'm not sure exactly where it will be on the agenda.
To include what?
The vote.
To take the vote.
Take the vote.
Just it would be in the action.
Yes.
In the action. Okay, so be toward the end of the meeting. So.
I can include that now. I think the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, if you want to, actually, yeah, I think they were going to be, like I say, at our school, at a school, so that's in the library. So, yeah, you're welcome to come to that. Or if you don't, yeah, we'll obviously let you know afterwards. So, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for our meeting here.
You.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Okay. And any motion to adjourn?
We adjourn. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
It's been moved in second to adjourn. All of you say aye.
Aye.
You know, so meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.